Ordinance to add B M C, Chapter two dot thirty-four regarding creation of a race equity advisory commission. So attorney, would you like to take it away?
I would. So attached to the agenda bill is the proposed ordinance. It hasn't changed. Since last week or the week before, so right now it is a race focused advisory commission. That is, uh, membership is limited to residents of the city of Bremerton. I mean, there's other features too, but those were the two that were the ones that were most discussed recently. I think we've all been over quite a few times, so I'm just waiting to hear. The direction of the council so I can draw some ordinance that you guys can consider and.
All right, yes, just as a reminder for anyone tuning in, two weeks ago, study session, we agree on the ordinance. We put it out for public comment only last week, got public feedback, and we're here today to discuss if there are any. Additional tweaks we want to make at this time based on the public feedback, uh, and then we'll hopefully go to public vote next week. I'll open up the floor to anyone who wants to speak and let's start with the.
I'm sorry, it's former chair.
Uh, sure, if you, yeah, okay, that would be within my rule procedures.
Yeah. So I wasn't here last study session. My name got brought up once and there was a reference to me at another juncture, so I just want to make sure that I'm on the record responding to those things. The first comment was the very first comment that was made that was, why isn't it here? I, I wasn't here because as most of you know, my day job is to enforce civil rights. It's to enforce anti discrimination laws, anti harassment laws, including sexual harassment. Sexual discrimination, sex discrimination. Uh, I've enforced Title Nine of the Education Act, uh, the Equal Pay Act. And along with that, all other forms of discrimination based on immutable characteristics. So, um, you know, I, I let council president know that, that work was keeping me from that study session, but. But my name was brought up and I want to make sure the public knows that I was doing my day job and, and. And there was, um. I think in that vacuum, as I'm the one that wrote this ordinance, um. Some really interesting discussion, and I'm actually glad that that discussion came out because it allowed the community to respond. Another comment that was made in that vein with community response. Was a comment that I made to a fellow council member about what I felt was going to be a possible ramification of changing the name. The way that that comment was posed seemed as if I almost said that as a threat. I want to set the record straight that that was actually me. Having been on R E A C for six months before becoming the chair and working on this ordinance for a year. Knowing what it would, the optics would look like. And the ramifications of seven white council members changing the name of a race equity focused commission would be. I'm an attorney by training and what I do is sometimes I look at worst case scenarios and I also look at. Advising people and that's what that comment was about. And as we saw, there was community backlash to the comments that took place. And there was a lot, and we're still getting emails from community about comments that were made during that study session. So in the future, um, please take my comments in.
Just comments.
I'm, I'm sorry, council president, in the future, I hope council members take my comments. As the way that they are intended, which is trying to be helpful, trying to advise and trying to. Avoid some really embarrassing. Uh, public discourse.
That's I'm gonna watch it there on.
Sure, no problem. Um, I am so, so, so happy. That the BIPOC community and especially white women in the community have been coming to council with their comments. About. Placing any sort of form of oppression above race. Uh, this is what I've been saying to council the entire time. Because this is what the work of the BIPOC community on the committee was messaging to me. This was a ordinance that started with my predecessor, Lord Lee. Another predecessor, uh, Leslie Dauks. And this was two and a half years of really hard fought work to make sure that. People of color in our community have a seat at our table. Because sometimes when there might be somebody up for election. Due to many reasons, those people don't get a seat where we're sitting. And so this was a way to create space to address race equity within the city. And so I'm really, really. At first I was really dismayed by the conversation that took place at study session, and now I'm actually. Quite pleased that it took place because it allowed us to hear from community members that this directly affects and who have done the work. Not just in the two and a half years or, you know, the one year that we were on it or the one and a half years that I was on it, but their entire lives. And I really want to. Applaud those who met that criticism with a willingness to sit down with people and to learn. From their experiences because we don't have that experience as white people. And I want to encourage people to continue to do that. And again, I'm offering my, uh. Service to, to sit down with people in a very congenial way to bring you in a, as white people and share my experience. Moving along the spectrum of racism to anti racism. We passed the ordinance for the levy as a seven to one vote. This is my challenge to this council to pass the race equity advisory commission with a seven to zero vote as well. To show our support and I hope we all do that.
Thank you. Um. I think I'm happy it happened too, um, and that is.
That's the same thing.
Yeah, um, I think I'm happy it happened, um, and I wouldn't have said that. Uh, probably in the week following it happened, um, uh, I think it was. A way outdated, I need to take responsibility for a way outdated. Uh, historical perspective of white feminists, you know? And I need to take responsibility for I'm not on the same, you know, I'm obviously not on the same page. As many of my colleagues with whom I've worked for forty years. This kind of brought me to my knees. It wasn't, it wasn't anybody on council, wasn't any white person. It was Dr. Karen Bolton. Who I've worked with for years, shoulder to shoulder, who stood in city council and confronted me. And told me that she was. She thought I was her ally. And that hit me like a ton of bricks. And words like colonialism were used and white supremacy and all, it's a huge thing to all of a sudden take on. Um, but I'm willing, I reached out right away to Dr. Bolton, Karen and I sat down. And we'll continue to sit down and I even got an email from Ballast Books. I think we might have a book group on women's fragility coming up here. Really soon, and I think that would be really positive, you know? Um, so I want to take responsibility and apologize, um, you know, for the people that I hurt. In the community, not the white people. The people of color. If I let the, my white allies down, I, you know, I'm sorry that you have that perspective. Um, you know, I just caution all of us, I wore that kind of resume on my sleeve for a long time. And now I'm having to confront the fact that things have changed. I brought that in never to put it above race, never have I suggested that race is more important. I was suggesting that women, because of some experience that we on council have been having, that, that. Gender issues should be addressed as well, and it was a horrible mistake. To take us back to a very, very painful time in history. Just a horrible, horrible mistake on my part. Um, I reached out to everybody that's written in. Um, you know, I, I want to gently, I want to say thank you, my fellow city council members. Um, I want to leave us with something though, when I was back in North Carolina recently and I went to a, what they call a UU. A Unitarian Universalist Service with my friend who's a UU, I guess, and, um. I heard this and it really resonated with me and I'm gonna just gently offer it to white allies. And that is, you know, be careful with moral outrage. We're seeing a lot of that in this country right now, on both sides, on both sides. And for me to be linked to white supremacy at this point in my career is. Off the chart. And so I, I say that gently, that didn't, that didn't, that didn't resonate with me. The words of, of, and if there were people of color around this table, um, they, it probably would have, you know? But I am going to be listening to my, my sisters and brothers of color a lot more. Uh, I definitely, I've always been supportive of this commission, this committee, um, and I remain so. And, uh, I, I'd love to see it move forward tonight.
Anna, thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Jeff. So I voted to call this commission the social justice or, and it was also proposed, the social justice and equity. And I thought inclusion, you know, let's everybody be under the big tent. So the response of Dr. Bolton, who I deeply respect, was. A useful shot, a really useful shot, so I got an academic way of doing things. So I went home, I studied, I thought. I took advice. And here's the thing, it's like what happens when you call something a social justice committee or a D E I committee is that. You know, basically the BIPOC community gets some warm words, white people get to check a box, you know, money gets spent probably. And you keep moving, uh, there's no structural change. So when I had gotten that far, I reached out to people who had spoken and said, here's as far as I've gotten now. If you have any suggestions for how I can. Evolve some more, I'd really like that. And so once again, Dr. Bolton and I met for coffee today and it's, it's white fragility. Uh, well, no, but I'm talking about women.
Don't talk to me, no.
Yeah, sorry, um, come on, it's a pedantic thing, you know, I'm right there. And so I'm mapping out a, a plan of action and, and moving forward. You know, it's, I walked around for about five days just feeling really ashamed, which is one of my least favorites. And so, you know, moving on, gotta keep trying to do better. So that's my plan.
Yeah, I'll, well, I'll say something, um. I, earlier I came in, I said, I'm gonna try not to talk during this meeting and I hope I've been mildly successful with that, but. Um, I am happy to hear that. Um, that you want to like learn and expand on that subject matter. And I'm super grateful, uh, that there's been some movement in that way in the culture here at the table. So just, uh. I'm just, and this is from, you know, personal experience too, um, just, uh, I, I think another thing about being. White and delving into this topic as we learn and grow is not to put the entire labor on our. Black and brown friends, um, that, I mean, there's other resources out there, it's emotional labor for them. And it's sometimes traumatic to have to explain over and over and over to white people all the time and to be tokenized in that way. So be cautious about that, um, because black and brown folks get tokenized all the time and, uh, I. You were gonna say something? Okay, um. And, uh, you know, throughout this whole process, uh, the group, uh, R E A C and the community, the community voices. It told us what they wanted, we've been in consultation, it's been hard work. And this is how it is in, in, in a lot of groups that deal with these hard issues, there's infighting, it's complicated. There's, people's lives are literally online, um, and so it's, 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 it's hard work to process everything and to even come to a consensus. As hard as that process was, really hard, it's, it's actually pretty amazing. The people look at it as a failure. In a sense of how we operated, but really so many groups fall apart due to infighting. Um, and don't ever get even, um, goals and priorities and, and a product like an ordinance out. And so the people, you know, that, um, that work, we all work together. I mean, I guess changing it would be like if you're ordering eggs Benedict. And then you just slap holiday sauce on a piece of toast, um, and give them a different name. So I just, uh, I think I'm really in favor of moving this forward.
I'm good, I just want to say how, you know, again, I said at the last, uh. Study session, I'm proud I am of this council for, um, tackling what's a tough issue. I think it's worth revisiting the history of. You know, all starting at the, the start of last year, we realized that the, the way that the committee was initially established needed to be. Codified with the full ordinance, um, and so there was a year long effort to get impact, input from R E A C on, on how to establish that. As a council, we set it as one of our goals and priorities to get done, uh, this year, um, there were, you know. We've left options on the table to pursue because I think that's our. That's our job as a council is to look to other cities and always explore all the options possible, and I'm glad that we've explored those and. Making it the race equity advisory commission is the, is the path forward in my mind, um, as we've heard loud and clear. So I just appreciate everybody around this table, everybody in the community who has spoken up on this, it's, uh. It's good sometimes for things to be messy, for everything to get said out loud and to hash things out because. Sometimes when there's silence, it, it means things are not going right, so. Um, I'm really glad to see this move forward, uh, I think the only. Last issue pertaining to the ordinance I wanted to bring up personally, um, was the residency requirement. And one option I wanted to put on the table, again, from looking at how other committees have established their, their ordinance as, um, on commissions. Uh, as of right now, I believe attorney, the ordinance has it at Bremerton city limits only, if I got that correct. Uh, one thing I saw the cities do was to do, uh, the city plus the urban growth area. Um, and so that would basically be situations, um, I feel, I. Sorry, I don't have the map on me, but, uh, if you look at Bremerton city limits, it's pretty jagged, it would kind of fill in nicely, and so I just want to put that option on the table to discuss. Um, I am happy whatever we land with either way, and this ordinance can be amended in the future, so not to hold it out.
Just to remind that at the last study session where we discussed that specific thing. The consensus, a majority of, of, a majority of council was to keep the wording exactly as it is right now.
No, I think the discussion last time was on Bremerton, but was basically on residence versus, sorry. Was on a residency requirement versus no residency requirement. I'm gonna propose specifically that it's a residency requirement, but not just Bremerton city limits, but Bremerton city limits plus. The urban growth area, which would be places like Anatai, um.
Yes, Navy Yard City.
Navy Yard City, yeah, basically filling in the gap, the jagged gaps around Bremerton.
Thank you for showing me a map of Bremerton.
Yes, and I can.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, so I'm just saying, I, I disagree with you.
Okay.
Um, my recollection is very strongly that it was, the wording was not, um. It was like within Bremerton and, and outside Bremerton, and including unincorporated Kitsap County. And the reason I think that is that my argument that we cannot affect anything in unincorporated. Kitsap County was one that Michael Goodnow responded to. So I just remember that piece of it. Kylie, can you recall what the previous wording was? I'm respectfully disagree.
Yeah, I, that's all, let me, uh, I don't want to put you in the position of having to.
I don't remember the specific, I know that we, there was a discuss, it previously whenever, uh. Quinn had worked on this particular draft, it included people who had Bremerton addresses. But did not live within the city limits, and then there was a discussion about. That, and it was a consensus at that point to just do city limits. I, I don't, I'm not saying I don't, I, I, I believe there was maybe a mention of U G A, but I, the. But I don't remember how that was discussed. The way that it is right now with race as the, um. The focus and the limitation that it be only city. Limits residents was based on the consensus from the meeting that took place. Like two study sessions ago or maybe even three. I took those, I did a presentation, there were like four issues and. It was, I, I believe it was during that that we got to this version, and if not, it was the next one when Quinn wasn't there. But, um, anyway, that's how I remember, I don't have it all written, but I, I, I know that I did not change that particular. Piece from the non resident without there being a consensus that it be limited to city.
Quinn, thank you, I suppose, I, um, I, you know, the, the reason that that was originally put in was, again, we had folks who wanted to be on the committee that. Steadfastly always, always came and gave public comment and we're right outside the limit. What I'm, think I'm gonna commit to is like modeling, going to those people most affected as we create rules about people most affected. Um, and I'm gonna reach out to people again who are on the committee, um, and, and other, you know, BIPOC leaders and see how strongly they, they feel about this and. I'm assuming this is gonna go on general business, I would, I'm gonna demand it goes on general business, I can do that as one council member. Um, so that we get some more public comment, and if there is, again, a demand from the community that this is really important, I'm gonna make a friendly amendment. Um, and, and we can go from there, but, but I actually, I, I agree with you, council president.
And Anna did provide some information, it would just.
I can try to share the patch.
That would be fantastic, if you're able, yeah, just so folks can know what I'm talking about, I apologize for not coming prepared with that now.
And these are subject to change with the comp plan amendment.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just so you, yeah.
Clarifying question to president.
Yes, okay, well, just make this up. Well, thank you, Director Spencer, so that the green area is city, I'm sorry, I'm part of the color blocks, correct me, green area is city limits and red is the urban growth area.
The gray is.
Gray.
Oh, this is learning something new.
The northernmost boundary where you see the streets and that's where they're all. I'm trying to drag it as far up as you can see it. And then you've got down here on the left, that's the, the area around the airport, so there isn't much for the virtual. So I could, I could move up just to show you, just little tiny pockets. This is how, this is really, there's very few of them down there, but. Knowing that jail road is in order.
And so U G A does not line up with the address thing, just so that everyone's clear on that, not at all.
Anna, then Quinn.
Um, just clarifying question, uh, Attorney Fennel said that the consensus at the study session. Was to keep the wording on Bremerton residency, that's correct, yeah?
Well, when we say at the study session, once again, that, that when we were, yes, I changed it from the, the, the language that Quinn had that was. Address in Bremerton or that, but outside city, like he had a Bremerton address and then there was a discussion about that and then. There appeared to be a consensus, at least four people at that one, that thought that it should be limited to city limits, and that's why I changed it.
All right, Quinn, I was just gonna say, I found it extremely helpful when, um, former council member Dauks, uh. Distributed the heat maps, um, that R E A C produced. Oh, awesome, and, and I think, again, I don't have the packet things in front of me, but I think the heat map shows, yeah. Thank you, um. This is just, this is just African American, but I'd love to see all of the, the BIPOC groups, but I think there is a strong. Concentration, especially in like the worst area, um, so, so let's be cognizant.
Yeah.
Let, let's be cognizant of that, but, um, yeah, I, I, I would, um. The urban growth areas makes sense to me, um, it's, especially like, I think in Denise's district and north of, um. So Jennifer's district and south of, I believe that's either there or, or Michael's or. Anna's, I, I don't know, those three get jumbled, but, but I think, um, maybe study these heat maps and see if there's. A population of BIPOC folk that might be interested in being on R E A C, cause, um, I know the, the city limits are kind of odd, but. That, when I look at that, that's, that's Bremerton to me, including the red, so.
Keep in mind that annexations, it involves the power of annexation, it lies in the hands of the citizens, so we don't process annexations very often. When we brought in S K I A, that was a monumental thing that happened back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two annexations down there. We've only had a couple very minor annexations close in off of Rocky Point, up in this area right in here, so. It, there isn't a lot of activity and I can tell you that over here in East Bremerton, there was a development proposal about where the. E M R after the, the first E M in Bremerton and, um, there was somebody who wanted to get utility services and to get utilities or to have to annex. Um, most of the people around there told that developer, no, we don't want to annex, we're not gonna join your petition, so. I, I guess I want to sort of caution you about choosing U G As because the, the. Probability of them becoming into the city in the near future is probably not very high. And the, and the Bremerton addresses go clear out here, you know, clear out to Fairground, they have Bremerton addresses way up there. Some of them turn into Paul's address, so it isn't, it doesn't have a lot of clarity, so I guess I just want to caution you a little bit about their urban growth areas. We haven't seen a lot of progress.
Thank you.
So did you have more comments, Quinn?
Uh, yeah, just to that, um, just to, sorry, and then Jennifer, just, it's a really quick one. Um, really to, to my point, I, I don't think it's necessarily like in anticipation of annexation, it's. Geographical and cultural identity, and if I was living in any of these spots, I, I would. The, the municipality closest to me and that could affect me the most would be Bremerton and so it's more about. Again, looking at policies through a race equity analysis to make sure that those BIPOC members are included as much as possible. So I, I'm, I'm less concerned about the, the boundaries and who's paying taxes as I am, um, making sure. Folks who work and live in our community are, uh, able to, to serve on a, a committee that, um, clearly, clearly is needed.
Jennifer. Since you already spoke, yeah.
A couple of time, um, and so I really appreciate this adaptation. Um, I think that there are times where, uh, the Bremerton addresses do stretch out really far. And I appreciate that we're continuing this discussion, um, so there's, um. We actually had a, a pretty active, a couple of active participants that said that they would have liked to join, but they are two blocks over or across the street from. Uh, city limits, when I reached out to friends, um, uh, to say, hey, we've got this commission may, or this committee, maybe you'd like to be on it. Uh, that was a common response, um, and I think that while. I understand and, and appreciate, and it's worth exploration, um, the concept that. Well, people who live outside of the city limits can't, you know, we can't affect change for them. This is a network of people, we can't, we have these pockets that are not city limits, but they are still the community, it's still Bremerton. They're gonna say, you know, West Hill, they're gonna say, I live in West Bremerton. You know, when they live at Navy Yard City, they're gonna say like, you know, like, I, they're, they're, they identify as downtown Bremerton folks. Um, people at Rocky Point, people in Tracyton identify as, you know, East Bremerton. I mean, the city of Bremerton is important to the people that live in these areas, so there's, um. There's a, there's a community and, and the way that we are annexed, um. Chunks out these people that have an identity with our community. chunks out these people that have an identity with our community and have, um, real input, you know? Uh, they go to the same churches as people who are in the city limits. Um, they go to the same schools and the same, you know, hospitals, which apparently is not in Bremerton, but you know what I mean? They have, they go to the same dentist, you know, whatever. They go to the same places. They're, they're all identifying in the same way with each other and they care about each other in these ways. So we can you know, say, well, they can't, you know, fix the sidewalks. Well, that's not really necessarily the job of, of React anyway, is to talk about sidewalks. So it's about bigger issues and it's about community and it's about building community. So, thanks.
Any other comments on this proposal, Quinn?
Final comment, short comment. Um, thank you again to the community members that, um, spoke on this issue. I encourage people to come, uh, when we go down this, it'll be May third, is that right? And let's all, as white people in positions of power and privilege, take this as a lesson to not just pass this ordinance unanimously. But then, you know, this is the beginning of the work. Listen to this commission on issues of race equity moving forward and really, really, take this as the asset that it is. Because this is what all cities are doing. This is what all organizations are doing. This is what people in 2023 should be talking about. It's 450 years overdue in this country. So please take these last few weeks as a lesson. When you are considering proposals from this advisory committee moving forward, there's people that are gonna be on this council longer than I am. And, and that's my challenge to you, not only to pass this unanimously, but to listen to this commission. I'm sorry. Challenge to you, President, Houghland, as well as everybody else.
Like for next week or any, we'll even.
Looks to retire that discussion. I think I, I'm personally in agreement of, uh, I happen to leave it as it is now and then ask the community, can we make a motion to amend it, um, if we get feedback that that is what the community would like? During, during.
So I will, I would do want to point out though, that the recommendation from, I guess, the, the former group, React, was that it be extended. That was what we were before. And then we went back to limiting it to city limits. So, but I will write it however. You all tell me to write it tonight. So I just want to know what I need included in the package tomorrow.
Anna, she had her hand up and then.
Had you finished?
I think I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I'm really grateful to Councilor Dennehy for reminding all of us how smugness and self-righteousness are just really difficult to overcome. That said, on August, huh, August, really, I'm moving us forward into the summer. Um, on, on April 12th, we did, uh, a majority of council did make this change. If a majority of this current city of council wants to propose an additional change and an additional iteration of the Race Equity Advisory Committee, you know, then, then so be it. And we leave enough in democracy that whatever the majority wants to do, that's what we're gonna do.
And, and just to reiterate, I think I've said this before, whenever I'm doing this drafting and it's one of, um, councils initiatives like this, um, when we talk about and I get consensus that we're not doing like full votes, this is just to help me with drafting and to try to put something close enough to what will be what you want to vote on next week. We aren't making real decisions until we get public comment. And so this is just, uh, helping me draft something so that we're less likely to have needed an amendment. That's it. And so I can write this however.
No, clarify, I'm pretty sure this specific proposal of UGA, we didn't discuss because it was after the last, only in the past week or two where I looked at a couple other cities' websites, including the United Social Justice Equity Commission, that their language and that had the specific proposal on there. But, yeah. No, but if it's great to discuss it.
So we are, I guess, um, I just want to get some clarity as we're navigating this and I don't want to speak too long on it, because I think we have made some progress in the biggest way. And I don't want to drag us down. So we're gonna, like at this table in this session, we're okay with leaving it. It's written as React.
It is.
Okay. And so the only thing that we need to really think about is, do we want to go ahead and make a recommendation to you about how to change the membership requirement? And so I'm in favor, I'm in favor of urban growth area.
I would be too. I think Jennifer made a great point about community. And the people that live in those fragments are part of our community. Uh, and we need to hear from them because of that. And so I, I'm all for that.
So it would read nine, five to nine members shall be residents of the city of Bremerton or the city of Bremerton Urban Growth Area. The city of Bremerton Associated Urban Growth Area. Okay, okay.
Okay, then I think I'm hearing enough, uh, consensus to make that update. And then, of course, it'll go out to, uh, for public comment.
Sure, that will be the version that is included in the package for next week.
So yes, if council is in consensus, then this will go to, oh, sorry guys.
I know I've asked this of you, I just, I want to know when.
You know, I'm so, so sorry, this, in the back there, these microphones can pick up all side conversations. Just, thank you.
I just want to make sure that I mentioned this during the right part of the process. And if this isn't it, tell me. But I've mentioned a few times and maybe it's just not possible or not wise. But to have put in the ordinance that the initial uh, commission on race equity or whatever it's gonna be, um, has at least two representatives of the original React.
So when we discussed it.
Okay, yeah, no, give a response, thank you.
Council President. As, as, um, Vice Chair Chamberlain remembers, when we, um, brought the, the recommendations of uh, React to, um, Legal, who, who then kind of gave us their, their legal analysis of, of what was kosher that conforms with state law and the, the charter. Um, and what doesn't, one of the issues was separation of powers issue. And so council can create this commission and Kylie can correct me if I'm wrong on anything, but council can create this commission. Um, because that's part of our powers is to create ordinances. Um, but in confirmation with the charter, we cannot take away the power of a mayor to appoint. So, you know, I, I, I believe we can informally send like, hey, this person would be great for React and uh, please encourage them to apply, but that would be usurping the mayor's executive power.
Section thirty-two of the charter.
Uh, this is, may not be Jermaine, so cut me off. It's not, okay. Yes, get that gavel ready. We still have somebody whose term is not up and they have not been in consultation during the process of DEI and so on.
Yeah, I, the, the, the part of the ordinance and, and right now is just that the council quit convening a commission at the end of the year.
Okay, okay.
That the council, I'm sorry, quit, you repeated.
They, they ceased convening the commission.
Committee.
The committee, sorry. At the end of twenty twenty-two.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I think at this point, the issue is the UGA or city limits.
So let me sum up, if I make sure I got it right, and then we can, we have other comments, questions, but as is, this would go on general business next week with everything the same that's been for the past couple of weeks and the proposed ordinance of the Race Equity Advisory Commission. Um, with the change of, um, from just Bremerton to the thank you, so the Associated Urban Growth Area. No, no, okay. Any other comments, suggestions? Okay, thank you all. No, okay. Nope, just thank you council, thank you, uh, community once again. Um, and again, while, uh, general business, so there's opportunity for public comment, opportunity for us to make amendments, um, and now go to vote.